Okay.
All right. Call the April 2021 USD 350 Board of Education meeting, the order. Welcome visitors. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have nothing.
And a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Say. It's been moved and seconded, but the board approved the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Filing sign. Motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing unusual to report on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'm with the board.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Say. It's been moved and seconded, that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Filing sign. Motion carried. Okay. Patron comments? All right. First up, strategic planning.
We've talked about this a few times, and now it's time if we want to move forward with this strategic planning, I need input from the board on whether this is something we want to do. So with KASB, there's other consultants that would do this as well. But part of the process is having somebody come in to lead us through the process. This shouldn't be about my vision or your vision for the district or no excuses, you know, having somebody outside come in and talk with our community members and our staff and us about what we want to see for our district in the future. So two and a half, three hour session, they would come in and get input from community members and then compile all that information a week or two or three later, come back and meet again, present that information and then, you know, develop some common themes of things that, you know, any of the issues that we have, we need addressed, that need improved, where we want to see our schools in the future, facilities, all of those things, what are the common needs there and then how are we going to go about meeting those needs? So the fee is $3,500 and they would put together a report for us and to go from there. This one is from Dyson. He can skim through it, I'll just pass it around, but really to take action on that, but I did want your direction on how we want to go about this if we want to move forward with it. My suggestion would be wait till the fall when we get up and rolling in the school year and then start that process.
How much need time do they need to get on the schedule?
It depends on how much they have going. They, I talked to him a couple of weeks ago and as far as his schedule, he probably, he said he probably could have got it done before the end of the school year. So, you know, a month or so, depending on the schedule, I think he could work pretty quickly.
Personally, I think we need to wait until the fall because right now between COVID, the water district conversations and the state senate bills, I think there's some things that need to be a little more clear before we proceed with it. So we can be realistic about what we, what we can say.
So you mean, you mean, you mean, you think we should do it but not meet until the fall or you think we should wait till the fall to decide anything?
I think we should wait till the fall to decide anything. I'm all for doing it, I just, I don't even know the fall is. It's going to be enough time with the water district. Who is it that's doing it now?
Doing what?
That's taking it to court.
Oh, the Audubon Society?
Yeah, thank you. I could think of Audubon. I just think there's too many questions right now for, for us to be able to set something realistic, not knowing if that's going to affect us if the, the senate bills are going to be, if somebody's going to sue about the senate bills because of the change in, in how much money's going to be allocated to the schools. So I think we need to address it again in the fall, not necessarily start it in the fall.
My mind, I'd kind of like to see the Courver side. I think it's something we need to do, it's a matter of the timing. The Courver side impacts enough on school funding that pulling farmers in might be a little concerned from a community standpoint about some of that planning, but I don't, that thing can drag out years.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so will we know anything as well?
I know, that's my biggest concern. I'd like to know an answer there, but I think at some point we do need to do this. So.
Yeah, whether it's fall or five years or 10 years, it might still be in limbo. Who knows? How long we been dealing with it? 50 years? It's been a looming issue.
Is that something we can tentatively plan and then if we see, hey, things are still up in the air part of everything, we can postpone it?
Yeah. And I can have, Gary Seacrest is who I've been talking with at KASB, I could have him zoom in at our next meeting and he could explain the process in more detail and answer some of those questions, maybe that'd be a better, better thing to do and you can ask him about the timeline and those things, we can have him right here.
That's a good idea.
No worries.
Okay. Student handbook.
This is not an action item right now, but you do have a handbook, starting on page 32. We don't plan on any major changes to the handbook. It is important that the board approve this handbook because it is, it does end up being board policy, so. We don't have any glaring issues, I don't think. So provide it to you all as a courtesy and if there's things that you've heard come up or input you have for us, be sure to let us know. Anybody have any questions on that?
Thank you. Capital outlay plans.
This is kind of the same thing, I just wanted to keep this fresh in our mind, we'll try to get a final plan here next month or the month after, just looking at our needs. So this isn't any new information, there may be a couple of tweaks I've had throughout the year, but really, this year, replace those rooftop units, we have that on for next year, we kind of have that plan in place. So that would be, next year would be this summer, this summer's projects. Yeah, we did a little bit of flooring, we'll have some more of that. I have these red items here, the tennis court, that would be, I think within five years that we had that new surface put on. If we recoat that, it extends the warranty another five years, something to consider. I put, I left that number on there, but that's not in the budget, so it's not counted in that total. Same thing with our vehicle storage, the old shop, the old weight room outside, cutting doors, pouring some concrete for approach, making that facility into a usable garage for our vehicles, it's a want, it's a need, but this is also one of those that I kept in the plan, just, it's not counted in the total. So if those are things we want to try to do, we need to find a way to pay for them. Girls locker room lockers are almost useless right now, they're so small, they can't get their duffel bags in there. Looked at replacing them last year, talking about the high school girls locker room, we just couldn't fit it in the budget. It's something that really needs to be done. The whole locker room needs to be remodeled, but definitely don't have that kind of money. That is in, in the budget here. Our lease purchase payment, you see the light at the end of the tunnel here, three more payments on that, at least for the main campus. And then next year while we're on this, same thing with this track, extending the life of that, I don't remember how many years ago that was, six years I think is when we redid the track. They can put a second surface on that, more of a hardware coating, and that will extend the life of that track, so something we need to consider coming up, maybe not that year, but.
We still have a annual maintenance plan on that track going?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't need, no.
But don't they come in and look at it or?
They don't, no. I need to call them in, we've got a few spots, but.
Okay, because I wonder what that looks like.
We've got materials that we can repair, small areas, we've done that in a few areas, but no, there is no regular maintenance on that. Big item is our library roof. It's past the end of its life, it needs to be repaired. I think we could limp it along another year, but really the net, the following summer, we really need to do something with it. It's, it's kind of a bowl shape up on top of this building and it's rubber, rubber sheets that go all the way across and then there's seams and then there's rock in the bottom there, so the rubber's exposed on the incline. Well, what happens is those seams fail and it's under two inches of rock, you have no idea where it is, so you have to screed back all of the rock in order to find that. We've been lucky and have been able to find them, but that roof needs to be replaced. There may be other options, I've only talked to the one vendor and it was, $130,000 was their estimate and that was completely tearing off everything, maybe we don't need to tear off everything.
But Josh, some of this COVID money we can use towards?
It has to be related to COVID. So heating and air, if it relates to eliminating the spread of virus, improving indoor air quality, I'm not certain if we would need to include better filters or something like that and like our rooftop units. That, we can make the case that our old equipment is not sufficient in those shared spaces, it spreads virus, that's a bad thing, we can use our COVID money probably for that. Library roof, that'd be difficult to make a connection that, that will help in any way with the virus or not the virus, but any disease spread indoor air quality, learning loss, things like that, because we missed school. Has to be related to the pandemic in some way.
And you said there is a deadline on that, right? It was supposed to be used up?
Yes. The second round of funding that we have, we basically have two, two years to spend that and then the third round of three years to spend that. And that's, well, while we're on that, that's our next agenda item, but so what we're looking at for that is the at-risk teacher and interventionist that we talked about. We've, we've had that position advertised so that that person will be working with our struggling kids, we should have kept that position, but we didn't. So that addresses the fact that we've had kids learning at home or learning remotely. The pandemic is directly responsible for our kids having struggles, so hiring a person to help with that learning loss, we can make that connection for, for the virus. The other thing, windows would be one of those to help with indoor air quality, we can replace those windows, that helps keep fresh air in the building, mitigating the spread of virus. But yeah, our HVAC control system is probably 30 grand, that needs replaced. Other options for, maybe we could make a connection to the pandemic in the rooftop units like I mentioned. Technology, it'd be hard to make a connection moving forward, we're not doing any more remote learning, but we need to buy, you know, we've taken advantage of some of that money to get additional devices, so if we had to go remote, everybody had a device, but now moving forward, it'll be tough to make that case. So that answer your question? Vehicles is another one, we are looking at replacing a bus this summer and the bus does not cost $35,000, the bus would cost more like $80,000. But the idea there is we would pay off our current lease purchase, which is, I think, $35,000. Now, we'd pay that off and start a new one, so basically just extending the lease purchase. I don't like to do that, cash flow wise, I think it's what we've got to do. Some of these technology purchases, we get, we get about 21, 22 grand a year from our small rural schools grant through the federal government. We've been using that for after-school program to keep that going in our preschool, sometimes we use that for technology, so that might be an avenue for some, use that revenue rather than capital outlay. So the way this is set up, you know, we want to, our goal, our board has set a goal of keeping that ending balance at $250,000. That year we get into the library roof, puts a hurt on that ending balance. Any estimated revenue is just that, it's estimated. If we shut down a bunch of irrigation wells, that number will go down quite a bit. Wouldn't be immediate, but. So that's the plan, our capital outlay, our facilities team, I guess, is Derek and Carl, so our plan is to get with them and then we'll talk about some of those things, try to update this plan. So anybody has any input now or between now and the next meeting, feel free to let me know your thoughts. So right now for that, the coronavirus relief funds, I think between our at-risk teacher and windows, that's going to be more money than we have available. I don't, I don't know about the windows, but it's going to be pretty expensive. The framing of the window next to the concrete wall need to be removed, there's going to need to be finished work inside, a lot of those roofs go up past the ceiling, the false ceiling, so removing all of that, it's going to be complicated, it's going to get pretty expensive pretty quick, so it's not just remove the windows and stick in a new one. I think it's going to be more involved in that.
Are you thinking all of the windows in the school or?
I think, I think in our, in the main original building, pretty much all of those classroom windows, those are the main concerns.
Okay.
It's being able to open the darn windows when it's, this time of year, it's, it's 70 degrees outside and the sun's beating through the window and it's 80 degrees in your classroom, we're going to turn on the air conditioner, can't just open the window, so. So that's where we're looking for the coronavirus relief funds right now, I mentioned the control system, there's summer school, some, some schools are doing that, but if you all want me to go in a different direction than that, please let me know. I'm not 100% certain about the funding right now anyway, because there was some talk in the legislature about using those funds to replace tax revenue at the state level rather than providing it to schools or using that as general state aid. So we're still giving it to the schools, but it's, it's not doing anything to address the pandemic. Federal funds, there's clear stipulations, you cannot supplant existing funding, you have to supplement, which is the intention of that. Schools have had a tough time dealing with this pandemic, use this money to address it. If you don't have anything to address, then you don't need the money. So, but I think there, our attorney general has filed suit with other attorneys general around the nation to free up some of that money for states to use. There's an application process we need to go through, we haven't done that yet, so they're going to be, the state will, we will submit to them what we want to use it for and they will approve or disapprove of that. So it's a little different process than what we've been going through.
So if the funding doesn't come through, can we make that teacher work?
Yeah. I'm 98% certain that funding is going to come through.
Good.
I don't, I think the law is pretty clear about that, but.
Okay. Other questions or discussion? Okay. Next question?
Yep.
Natural gas bill.
So this was definitely sticker shock. Have a bill that's normally in the $3,000 range in our coldest months to be $21,000. It's less than what others have seen. I was expecting 40, even up to $60,000 based on what I was hearing from other, others that have gotten their bills, school districts and other businesses. So we can, we have some options here. So our coalition, our, and that's not the right word, our consortium that we're a part of, I didn't get the information of how much we've saved over the last 10 years, they were going to try to get that to us, so we could share with our boards of education, but we didn't get it. So they nominate 50 to 60% of the gas for the consortium. So they know about how much gas we're going to use amongst all of the school districts and they, they hedge 50 to 60% of that. They don't want to buy gas that we don't use and that we still have to pay for, so. So we know what that 50 to 60% costs and then the rest of it is subject to the market rate. So that's why we were probably shielded a little better than, than a lot of customers. About half of our gas, we was protected from that spike. How this happens, I don't know. There's attorneys general and our governor, governors across the nation, they're looking at what they can do about the profiteering and price gouging, how does that even happen in a, in a disaster like that? But, but it did and now we're here and we have a bill we have to pay. So what we can do is we just work with symmetry, which is who we pay for, pay our gas bill to every month. We can pay that on or before the due date and we'll deduct 5% off of that, that total. Or we can work with them and we pay over a period of six months. We're still in negotiations of how much interest that would, they would charge, KASB is working on it behalf with that. The problem with paying is if something is resolved, it might be hard to get that money back. It's uncomfortable to have a bill that's due and just not pay it. And we can join in legal action. So, so far KASB has paid for the legal advice that, that we've been getting. To take this further, we would need to pony up some additional funds for this law firm to work on our behalf. So it's based on enrollment, bigger districts pay more than the smaller districts. They will take a look at our bill, there were some concerns there that aren't we being charged for the, for the correct amount of gas or are we being charged the correct price? Because the gas they delivered on the day there was a price spike was already in the pipeline, maybe even in our, you know, coming into our building, but now they're trying to charge that higher amount on all that gas that's already been in the system. So they would look at that, looking into profiteering and price gouging, see if there's anything criminal going on there. So if we want to engage them, what happens? Phase one, they will take a look at our bills and analyze those bills and decide what amount we should pay under protest. We owe some money for gas, we used a lot more than we normally would have, obviously probably did at home too during that time, it was pretty cold. So paying what's a fair rate, what they believe is the legal rate that they're allowed to charge and also ensure the gas is still coming into our buildings if we don't pay the full bill. Their hope is that negotiating with, with symmetry, they would end up deciding that, okay, well, we'll agree this is a fair amount to pay and we move on with life. If that doesn't happen, we move on to the next two phases. Further legal action would likely take more dollars, it's going to be more expensive for that offer, obviously we're going to need to pay for that. So for us, we're looking at $400 for legal fee. So they're advising us, do not pay, if we feel we need to pay, don't pay more than that statutory maximum. I don't know where they got that, if it's based on the disaster was declared that there's a lid for where it becomes price gouging. We need to let them know by May 11th if we want to join this legal coalition. I don't have the engagement letter, so they didn't have it last I checked. So we don't have to decide tonight, we can decide at the next meeting. But at some point, if we want to take legal action, my recommendation would be to go this route with this legal coalition. This Smithyman and Zakura, they're representing others in this situation currently against symmetry, against other gas providers. Any questions?
What does it seem like consensus is amongst the schools?
I think they, they took a poll of the ones that were. I think, uh, they, they took a poll of the ones that were at least on the Zoom meeting the other day, and I wanna say about forty percent, we're just gonna pay the bill and get the five percent discount and see what happens. If we do not join the legal coalition, we pay the bill, get our five percent discount, if legal action is productive, we still benefit from that. Because it's the consortium as a whole. We would get their legal advice, for us in particular, but.
I would just start wondering on how many legal fees we'd start getting wrapped up, the longer it'd take, you know, if we're even better off just paying or?
I think they feel pretty confident that, that, that phase one is all it's gonna take, that there's enough, that's clear in the law that, you know, a disaster was declared on, I don't remember what day that disaster was declared, but it was like February fifteenth, and then, you know, three days before that was when that price spike happened. And so that disaster declaration covers that timeframe, and that's when the price gouging information kicks in, the laws about that, I'm not, I'm not saying that right, but they feel pretty confident that there's some, what's happening is not legal. They cannot be charging us that much.
Would it hurt to call this company and offer them five grand? And everybody's happy to walk away from it? Um, the math is close to that, I think, before we could decide what happened then.
Yeah, the board. Yeah, we can do anything, that, yeah, we could, we could negotiate directly with them. Yeah, we could, we could do that.
Just, you know, maybe I'd say, just get in the lawsuit and just get done and move on.
Some of the concern about the bills was, uh, what? Are they, did they have to pay that for the gas, and they're passing that on to us? Or did they receive penalties because they did something and it's just wrapped into the price? So they look at all of that. So again, we don't have to decide that today. Whether we wanna pursue legal action.
Set by May eleventh?
Yeah. And then the bill. So the bill is due this week.
Have we just received one bill?
Yes, I think it will only be one bill for that time period.
I know that Siri had originally said it would be, any changes in our bills would be over two months, um, so that's why I was asking, because if this is gonna show up again next month with a higher rate, then, um, let's join the lawsuit.
Yeah, I don't believe it's, it's more than just this one bill.
Okay.
But I'll check and make sure.
So is the question just about the rate, or is it also about the volume?
The volume is accurate.
Okay.
We get a, we get a statement from Kansas Gas Service showing our usage separate from this, and I did verify that those are the same. And you'll notice, you know, six hundred and sixty-three units were, over a thousand that we used. So that complicates it, you know. So my recommendation would be, let's not pay this, we can decide whether, right now, we can decide whether we want to, um, join the legal coalition. At a later date.
What day is our next meeting?
I think it's the tenth. Seems like it's right before that.
Yeah, it's the tenth, so it'd be. It'd still be within the timeframe.
Or we could move ahead and, and join that legal coalition now. It's not a whole lot, and nothing, nothing says that we can't, uh, that if things are moving forward with the lawsuit and we're getting wrapped up in that, we don't have to keep going down that, that road if it's gonna cost more money.
Have they made any contact at all besides the bill?
No. No. We've let them handle all of that. And frankly, I think the bills that came out are a lot lower than what they would've been, uh, because they've been asking more questions. So my, my gut feeling is go ahead and join the legal coalition and see what happens. And again, we'd be working with them on the amount we should be paying now, pay that as soon as we can. That law firm would be negotiating that side of things for us on behalf of all the members that are part of it.
If you don't think a phone call will work, I think we should spend four hundred dollars to try to set thousands.
I think that's, I think that's where we're at. I think so.
I'll make that in form of the motion.
Um, let me, uh, so I don't have an engagement letter, but, so the motion would be, uh, that the board join the legal coalition with Smithyman and Zakura for four hundred dollars.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board join the coalition with Smithyman and Zakura for four hundred dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. KSB dues and legal assistance fund.
Uh, this is just an every-year thing that, uh, this time of year, we look at, continue to be a part of Ken's Association of School Boards, uh, is my recommendation that we do that. They have, uh, option one here with the dues, they have a season pass that will allow members and administrators, really anybody, uh, board clerks to attend professional development workshops throughout the year. We just don't do enough of that to justify that additional cost, we just pay it per event fee. So my recommendation is to pay those dues, and then the legal assistance fund, uh, has been flat rate for several years now, they've raised it two hundred dollars this year, dues are fifty bucks more. So there's, uh, an agreement there that Derek would need to sign. They keep those two things separate, um, just because KSB isn't really, the board, the Board of Education, uh, consulting side of things needs to be different from the legal side of things.
So your recommendation is option one on that?
Yes.
All along?
Yep. Yep. And it's, the numbers on there for the, on the.
Okay.
Action item.
This press, it moved the board through the dues of five thousand four hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-four cents on the membership of KSAB and the fee of two thousand three hundred dollars for the legal assistance fund for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Start. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the dues of five thousand four hundred forty-six and twenty-four cents for membership at KSB and the fee of twenty-three hundred dollars for the legal assistance fund for the two thousand twenty-one through twenty-two school year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Board member activities and reports. Derek?
With a look, promenade, I guess.
Sean?
Brandon?
Carl? Um, yeah, I, uh, attended the Booster Club Golf Tournament, had a good time. We, uh, our team didn't take first, but I'm pretty sure we didn't take last either, so, um, that was pretty neat, and I think it was a, a good fundraiser, and I think they're gonna try to turn it into an annual fundraiser, and I had a good time, and the ladies did a good job.
Debbie?
Nothing outstanding.
Okay, thank you. All right, nothing for me. Administrative reports, Mr. White.
Start state assessments this week, you guys might remember, last year we didn't have the privilege of giving our state assessments because we were shut down, but, uh, so we have a gap in our, in our data, it's kind of important we get back on that and see where we're at, but, um, we'll be done by the end of this month, start this week, and it goes through the months, so it kind of crams it in a short period of time, but at least we're gonna have some data to, to look at. Uh, a couple weeks ago, I took eleven students, Mrs. Hager and I took eleven students up to Victoria, uh, for the CPL honors banquet, and the CPL honors banquet honors the top ten percent of our classes. Well, we took eleven, that's more than ten percent of the top two classes, juniors and seniors, but we have, uh, we have eight juniors who currently have a four-point-oh, so they all rank up there. I was never in that top ten percent, so I'm not sure what that feels like, but, um, last Wednesday, we hosted our forensics finals, uh, went pretty well, we were able to do the, the prelims virtually, and then do the finals live, so we didn't have three hundred people showing up on campus, we only had a handful coming to finals, or wouldn't have been three hundred, but we'd go a lot more. Went pretty smooth, just took a afternoon, have our junior senior play coming up this weekend, going forward with tomorrow, no, Wednesday, Community Service Day, so we'll feed our kids at about eleven-thirty at noon, we'll be all seven through twelve, be out in the community of Hudson and St. John, rural areas, um, just helping some folks with their, um, general yard work and stuff. It's a good opportunity for us to instill that, you know, pride in our students that we want them to have, and it shows our community that we have some pretty hard-working kids, and they'll do a good job. Kind of a, I don't know, exciting thing, our AV Productions class, uh, submitted one of their works to, uh, the twenty-twenty-one E Magazine Media Festival, and that included, um, Kansas, Missouri, I think Nebraska, several states, um, and we are in the top five, we don't know yet if we got first, second, third, fourth, or fifth, but we're in the top five, and we are the only one or two A school who ranked top five in any category, because we're born against Olatas and Blue Valleys. So, um, Saturday we have a ceremony in Olatas that Mr. Knight's gonna take a few of the students to and, and see what they get awarded. So for a new program, uh, kids doing that, just a few years old, kind of, kind of a neat deal. Band and choir CPL's complete, uh, we got ones and twos in, um, the CPL competition, that was all virtual, got it uploaded, regionals and state stuff is all the same way, and we've got stuff uploaded, but we don't know our results there. Kind of an update on graduation, I think Mr. Meyer may have talked to you about it, but we, uh, after some discussion, we decided to go ahead and have the graduation on the football field, you know, schedule it there, just because we didn't know what the, what the restrictions would be, or whatever, as it looks, we're probably okay, but still feel a little more comfortable with it being on the, on the field. So Saturday, May fifteenth, four o'clock, on the stage midfield, you guys will all be there, you're invited, hope you can make it. But, uh, anyway, um, talking about graduation already kind of seems unreal, but it's coming up in a hurry. So we'll plan on, on the football field, very similar to what we had last year, and we'll have Jim as a contingency backup, you know, any weather.
What's our theme this year?
I don't know, what do you guys want, you wanna go with the full shorts? We'll, we'll look at the temperatures, how about that, and then we'll decide, but hopefully it won't be too hot, you know, at that point, but, um, in May, but, yeah.
All right, thank you. Mr. Meyer?
Uh, we're still working on finding our, uh, identifying math curriculum resources, uh, so kept that on the list, cause we're not done with that, we'll, we'll have something for you here in the next month or two, a recommendation for purchasing those. Like Mr. White mentioned, we're starting on state assessments, we had our remote learners come in, Mrs. Bulker brought those kids in here, uh, tested them, uh, so all the kids have been learning at home, I think we had a hundred percent attendance, they all came in and, uh, and did that. We have this week, um, some information coming about, uh, the STAR recognition program with the State Department of Education, so they look at our data, our post-secondary success data, uh, any, uh, social, emotional, kindergarten readiness, um, our state assessment scores, all of those things they look at and award, uh, recognition based on that. So I don't have that to, to get you yet, but I'll get that out this week. I think they didn't wanna say anything until they have their meeting this week, uh, but that will be coming. Our house is progressing along nicely, um, we're a little behind the schedule, we'd hoped to have all the sheetrock in, we're, we may get close, but, uh, time's running out pretty quick, so, um, this is kind of a look at the layout. The door, we had talked about moving, we're not gonna move it, it's gonna stay over here, we decided it was just too much to try to move that, but we did move the stairs. I don't know if you remember the building, but the stairs are actually right here, right now, going up to that loft above the garage and going down to the basement. So we've taken those, or we're going to take those stairs out, move them in the living area, open up all this, there's walls here and here, we're gonna open up all that, so this will be all living area, dining area, kitchen area here, and then out to that entryway, which will make that into a laundry room. Garage is kind of small, it's pretty short. Bedrooms, we'll just tweak a little bit to add some more space to this bathroom, so we had to steal a little bit of room from this room for the closet. And they don't have all of that laid out, but they've got, they've got a hole cut for the stairs, and they're getting ready to, to build those stairs. And then the basement, um, we're working on new service here, Davis has been in and installed new sewer line, uh, at least coming into the building, over in this area. So this is obviously our restroom, stairs coming down. And this will all just be one, one great big room for family room, recreation, whatever, and then the bedrooms here, with some of that closet space we need to, plumbing to work, work through. So it's kind of all nice, if you ever wanna take a look at it, give me a shout, I'll take you over there and let you see it.
Have you put the, Mr. Moretz put the egress one in there?
No, no, we'll do that this summer.
Okay.
We're gonna contract that out.
What are you gonna pay upstairs?
It'll be a bedroom.
Bedroom?
Yep, so just a bedroom and a closet up there, I didn't pull that one out, but. Yep, so it'll end up being a five-bedroom, the basement bedroom's pretty big, two bathrooms. So some work to do, um, I'm not sure if we'll have it a hundred percent done next year, that's the goal, of course, but it wouldn't hurt to hang on it. That's the goal, of course, but it wouldn't hurt to hang on it, hang on to it for another year and build a shed or do more. We're not planning on doing siding right now, but we may decide we have to.
We could talk to your fans or something to, your privacy fans if we had a time budget.
Uh, outdoor learning area, we've looked at getting a greenhouse, a more permanent greenhouse, applied for a grant last spring, did not get that grant. There's other grants we can look at, the problem is, put all that work into applying for the grant, and we don't know till fall, and then should we fix up the current greenhouse or wait on the grant? So we're gonna talk to our education foundation about helping us out with the cost of that. Greenhouse is about 18,000. One thing we might need to include in our capital LA plan is some concrete work for that. But having a more permanent structure out there, wind played havoc on that this year. Also with our coil run, destroyed half of that, so, uh, we've got several signed up for Mr. Delb's class. Our goal is to have that more of an outdoor learning area, where maybe each class can have an area of the space in there, and this is your garden area, you guys take care of that. It's just kind of a weird space out there in the courtyard anyway, but, so we're looking at, at that. With our foundation, we get memorials in, uh, frequently. Sometimes it's $500, sometimes it's four or 5,000 that someone passes, they identify an education foundation for donations, so... Sometimes the family says, hey, we want to use the money for this. But then we've got a chunk of money in there, six or eight thousand dollars, that the families have never said, we wanted to go toward this. So we've got a good chunk of money in there without even touching the investments that would be a nice project for the foundation. So we're gonna talk to them about it. Uh, driver's ed, we are kind of in a holding pattern on that. Mr. Smith is working on his coursework right now, uh, then he has to do a practicum, and then, after all that's completed, then he can apply for his endorsement on the license, and then there's a procedure for that with KSDE. Right now, we don't know when we'll be able to start driver's ed. We don't have a firm date between KSDE and Fort Hays, uh, so hopefully here in the next month or so, we can at least nail it down on that, about when we can do that. Hopefully, we can get that done before we start school in August, but there is a chance that all of that won't get done. And it's the no fault of Mr. Smith or the school district at all, it's just the way the timing has played out with that. So, we really need to have a program going this summer, especially missing last year. We may, we've got a bunch of kids waiting on that, but, but the timing may not work out the way we wanted to. Uh, masks, I've heard nothing. I've had no complaints about the masks this week, uh, last week at all, uh, so that's been a non-issue. I don't know if you all have heard anything or not, but... We do need students, uh, one of the government vote. None. We didn't have any, any discussion about that with any families. I'll pass this letter around, that we, we received this, uh, this plaque from Kansas State Department of Education and the nutrition and wellness folks about our farm-to-school program. So that was kind of a nice recognition, we'll put that up in our, in our cafeteria. Budget legislative update, um, I think the 2% cut that I mentioned in one of my Friday notes, I think that's off the table. I think that they have not passed a budget yet, um, for the Department of Education, but they did approve funding for general state aid and local budget, local option budget state aid, so I think the 2% cut is no longer part of that. There is new law that if we, as a board, want to exceed the revenue-neutral rate on our budget, meaning if we wanna, if we want our mill levy to be the same and our valuation goes up, if we keep the mill levy the same, then the amount of tax money we collect goes up. So we would have to have a, a special hearing for that. Even though we are ready, hold a budget hearing and, and a public meeting for that and hold a, uh, and, and approve it in public, we'd still have to do that. There are some years where our revenue goes down, just depending on our valuation. So if we want to increase our mill levy, or if our valuation increases, which means we get more tax dollars, we have to have a special meeting and, um, special hearing for that, and there's reporting deadlines. It's been kind of, kind of a fiasco, um, because we don't even finalize some of that stuff until, you know, the end of July. We, we don't get all that hashed out and all the tax money that's come in and, um, know where we, we finished the year, and the legislature is wanting us to tell them what our tax rate was going to be, uh, well before that, so, uh, we'll see how that plays out. There's a requirement now for civics test and financial literacy, um, something we will have to navigate. I, I don't have a problem with kids learning civics, there's been some pushback on this from school folks that the legislature is now setting our curriculum for us, um, and that's not their charge, it's the State Department of Education and you all as a school board. And, and also with civics, it's, uh, the test is based on the citizenship test that would give, uh, you know, that if you want to become a citizen, you take that test. Well, that's not civics. Where is the Statue of Liberty located has nothing to do with our civics process and being engaged in, in the political process and being a good citizen. Good question to ask, but, uh, so there's some question there whether that's even civics or not, but some additional requirements we'll have. We already require financial literacy for a class for graduation. So that's some of the legislative things going on. They'll come back in May and finalize the budget and we'll know where we're at on all that, hopefully then. Daycare, uh, still working on that issue. I'm not sure if this is something that we'll be able to pull off and get ready this fall or not, but something we're still looking at. I got, I did get a message from Jamie Giddy at the city office today, uh, so we may have more progress on that. It's such a crazy time of year trying to get the school year ended and then summer trying to ramp up for the fall. I'm not gonna make any promises that we're gonna have something put together, so, uh, I don't wanna overpromise anything there, but something we'll keep looking at. Board of Education, uh, elections, Alisa has certified those to the, to the county clerk and the positions that are up. The Sean, Carl, and Vance, so give that consideration whether you want to run. June 1st is the deadline. So if you don't want to run again, you have to find a replacement that's equally as good. That's the rule. So if you have questions about that, uh, hit me up or hit Alisa up, who knows about it. I think that's all I have on my report.
All right, thank you. Okay, executive session, personnel.
Uh, we're gonna need, uh, 20 minutes and more. Just me to start out with, and then we'll have Mr. White come in.
Mr. President, I knew that the board go to executive session to discuss the performance and qualifications of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KO MA with Mr. Meyer to be included, and that we return to open session at 8:20 in this room.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we go into the executive session to discuss the performance and qualifications of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KO MA with Mr. Meyer to be included, that we return to open session at 8:20 in this room. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, sign. Motion carried.
I have a recommendation to hire Diana Bunker as, uh, for 712 English Language Arts for next school year.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second that we hire Diana Bunker for 712 English Language Arts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, sign. Motion carried. Okay.
I have a, uh, letter of resignation from Mrs. McAllister for, as the junior class sponsor. Detective at the end of the year, I'd recommend approving that resignation.
So moved.
Third. It's been moved in second that we approve the resignation of Mrs. McAllister for junior class sponsor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposing, sign. Motion carried. Okay.
Future...
Future adjournment.
They're listed there for you. I can read them to you if you want me to.
Okay. Motion for adjournment.
Third.
It's been moved in second, we adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposing, sign, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.